Call the meeting to order at seven oh two. Sorry for we're two minutes late. We'll start with the approval of the May meeting minutes. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? Okay, if there are no comments or corrections, I will deem the minutes approved by unanimous consent. And before I kick it over to Ms. Stein for our state school report, this is our last meeting for the 2022 2023 school year. And I just wanted to take a minute to on behalf of the board, just say something in regards to the year and just really love on our staff, our admin and every person here at L N C that makes this place so special. You know, we've had a year of ups and downs, more ups than downs, which is good, but you know, I I I know that every board member sitting up here, it's been a pleasure to serve you all through that. And we hope that you guys have a wonderful summer and we look forward to seeing everybody back than in the next school year. But you know, I really think that, you know, our staff and our teachers and our administrators deserve a special thank you for everything that they've done. We really have an incredible team here and thank you very much, so. And then as a second note, we have a board member who is going to be rolling off this year. It's the end of her six years on the board. And I will say I I don't even know if there are words to really say that could even come close to how much I've appreciated her and, you know, being on the board. And so I feel like there isn't anything that I could say that would do justice, but she has been a constant wealth of knowledge. She's been a source of calm and everything in between. And so I it is, you know, my sincerest pleasure to say thank you, Jen, for your six years of service on the board. So, yeah. I know, don't you want to come back? Okay. All right. So thanks for bearing with us through that. And Ms. Stein, if you'd like to give your school report.
I would thank you. I also want to just echo how thankful I am for Ms. Johnson. She has been, it's it's hard to, as Amy said, there's people that have lots of talents and Jen is definitely one of them. But my, one of my favorite things is you ask the best questions like that is like I'm I'm trucking along. I have a great thought and you're like, yes, but and you ask this wonderful question. I'm like, and we're always better for for that thoughtful question, and that is a rare gift. So thank you for sharing that with us. So, all right, on to end of the year is always great. I so enjoyed. We had our kindergarten moving on up, the fourth grade moving on up, the eighth grade moving on up, and then finally graduation, which ended with fireworks, which was really awesome. So so proud of our kids at every level. And what was neat about that week of seeing that is seeing all the kids like the kindergarteners. And first of all, how the staff wraps around them to make that special and yet how they're twirling on stage and going in different directions than fourth grade are so together and singing a beautiful song and are so, you know, articulate in speeches and then eighth grade and all of their accomplishments. And then you get to high school and you just see the the culmination of of everything that has happened. And as as Ms. Carr said, all the work that the folks here, including our board, puts towards creating an environment. So it really was great. And for those who got to attend, other than it was just a hair chilly, it was it was not rainy and that was pretty awesome. And it was really a great night. So we wish our graduates the very best. They have some really cool plans ahead. And if you saw the night's news, there's a list of all the all the recent graduates. So we're excited for them. I have two things to share. I'm going to start with the the not fun one, and then I'll go to the really fun one. So the not fun one is I want to give the board and the community an update on our HVAC system at the elementary school. As I've reported to the board before, and Scott can can jump in if I forget anything. We had a catastrophic failure of our HVAC system and air conditioning, not just when it's the conditioning unit. It does heat, it does cold. It was a catastrophic failure. When researching that failure, it was clearly a design flaw by the engineer who designed that, and we did a design build. So we were looking to hopefully work in a just honest upfront manner with our builder to point out and provide documentation. And I will say the attorneys that we are working with were very clear. And Scott and I met with them and said, look, it is probably unlikely that the they will, there's there's sort of a a way that insurance companies like to process claims. And because they have in-house counsel, they will run you through pretty much a whole process, even if they even if they sense that they're in the wrong, they're going to run you through the process because they know it's costing you money, time and effort and hope that that will lead to either some type of a settlement and or maybe you'll just drop the suit altogether. And just to sum that up to the board, I think that HVAC system failure cost the school about $230,000. So it was it was significant, and that's why we went ahead and got counsel to help us through that. So sadly, we we did talk with our attorneys and said, okay, well, what where they had been in contact with the carrier for the builder, felt like they had given them good documentation, everything they had wanted, but kind of warned us that that's normally what happens. And this afternoon, late this afternoon, we heard back from the carrier that they are denying the claim. So basically, at this point, that means we're going to have to go towards litigation. So what you can expect as a board, and and we talked a lot about, you know, my people are going to smile because I use this a lot, is the juice worth the squeeze? And I use that a lot because when you're racking up attorney's fees and spending a lot of time gathering evidence and on phone calls and mitigate and mediation and all that, you you do have to ask yourself that. And and I did ask that of them, but given the amount of this claim, they feel that the amount that we're going to put into that is going to, you're we're going to end up net to the good. And so and they do feel it's a very strong claim. We have good, good evidence as to why that is. But again, expecting to have to go through the process. So at this point, we'll be moving forward with litigation. And they're going to come back to us with different pathways. And so sometime next week, we'll do that. And probably at our August meeting, I'll come and give you another update. And we may have to see at that point, based on what the plan is, potentially having the board take a vote on that to commit. So we can start down the litigation path, but not get so far that it would be outside the board's purvey. So but I will, if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer those. We're dealing with Allison Hoard. It's Allison Hoard, and you know, there's usually multi names behind that. And they were actually recommended to us by Gil, because that's not in his wheelhouse, because they do so much construction litigation. So that's that was the reason behind that. It is currently, and and that's what we're waiting to. So basically, up to this point, it's been hourly because we've been, hey, hopefully, we're just going to send a nice letter to say you didn't design this properly, please pay us. And so that's been hourly, but I think that'll be the plan that we're expecting to come back now is some type of options of what that looks like moving forward. So and since we have three attorneys on the board, that will be helpful in in helping to, and that's probably what we're going to need to vote on at that point. So up to this point, it's just been those hourly pieces, but it it will rack up pretty quick. And and they gave us, you know, it it's going to be in the it's at a high enough level, it will be outside of my scope of being to authorize on that. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, let's go to the fun stuff. So a big thank you to Lon and his team. I am very excited. In the spirit of our mission, we are going to be doing a service project, which is we're going to be serving Children's Impact Network and hopefully leading in a global society. Remember when we were looking at our mission and it talks about global society? So what we're going to be doing, as you guys know, we rotate our computers and iPads, we get a little bit more money back on those when we sell them, but the computers update pretty quickly. But when you live in a third world country, that's quite a bit different. And so we're going to be partnering in a way with Children's Impact Network. And what they do is they support orphans and endangered abused children in three different areas, which is Bolivia, Honduras and Chile. And part of our agreement with them is we're going to be sending down some computers, about 20 computers to each one of these facilities. We're teaming up with submissions groups here in the Huntersville area and Greater Charlotte area to get them to these different orphanages. And we're also servicing, there is a program in 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 the Honduras, I can't think of the name of the town right now, right outside the Honduras Life Center. There the town that surrounds that, there is also a program for at-risk youth to keep them out of gangs. Because in that area, because it's so endangered and there's a lot of poverty, it's very easy to get kids into gang related stuff. So we'll also be sending a few computers there. So total of about 20 computers going to each one of those spots. And then we've been working with our Spanish and World Languages Department, and they will be making contacts with each one of these different orphanages. So they get an opportunity to learn about the cultures from the different, the different places. So even though they're Spanish speaking, obviously Honduras and Chile and Bolivia are very different places and have different challenges, and they will get a chance to work on their Spanish. And some of the children in these facilities are learning English, so it will be reciprocal. So the idea is to try to support impoverished areas with something that would not cost us very much, but actually the benefit that we're going to get back. So Lon and his team have helped to to plan for that and implement. So because you have to get the computers just the right way, get them cleaned and prepared to go and re-imaged. And and then we will see what that is, and we're hoping that we can share this story here in Charlotte once we actually start making those connections. But so the computers will go down this summer and then the connections will start in this fall. So that's what we're doing. So I'm pretty excited about that. And that's it. No, actually, that wouldn't be. But here's one of the issues, and I'll use specifically because I happen to know about Honduras. And I'm not as acquainted with Bolivia and it with Chile. But when you go to Honduras, when you try to take materials in for orphans, it's can I say this? There are a lot of people that it it's just a country that isn't dictated by a lot of rules. So they will say the people who screen you at the airports might say, oh, I see you're bringing a bunch of crocs for orphans. You're selling those. You owe us a tax of $200. Now, if you each buying a pair of crocs, that's going to be fine. So the reason we're sending what we're sending is because we're going to have to put one computer per person that's going down on these mission trips so that it doesn't look like, does that make sense? So we're working with a local, we're working with local partners to get them down, but the challenge is, so Children's Impact Network is stationed out of Miami, Florida. And so that we have a local contact and but part of the challenge is to get things in country. It means they can't just pack them up in Miami in a big box and send them. Because if they do, they'll either get stolen or they will get taxed. And the taxes aren't government taxes for real. They're they're people who work at the airport taxes. And so there therein lies the challenge. So we're putting our toe in the water. We know based on the experiences that these local partners have that we can get in right now what we have. And then maybe beyond that, we'll be able to support beyond that. But if you guys can imagine, when they went into COVID, they had the same thing we did. And so I'll use Honduras again. They they now have two orphanages, one you can see is being built, but they're now fully functional. They had, they had three computers for 40 children. And they were learning virtually. So you know, that shows you what some of the challenges are. And the the program in Honduras for the at-risk youth, they they only had a couple of computers as well. And they're trying to teach them skills that then they can, you know, be marketable and and be not having to go into things that are working on the streets or working in gangs. So so hopefully, we'll be able to expand that some more, but that's one of the challenges, and maybe we'll be able to expand it. So, thanks, guys.
Hey, Amy, before we move to the next, can we circle back for just a second to the the meeting minutes from last month, because I neglected to point out a significant typo that should be corrected. That if in part three, where it talks about the appointment of new committee members, it refers to Greg Morris. And I believe it's Gray Morris, isn't it? So we, so I just think we should go back and and say that the committee minutes, you know, are approved, subject to that correction.
Okay. So how do we?
Capture this in that notes, and then I'll make the correction before we post them to the website. Good catch.
Elizabeth, this is only my second one. Okay, thank you, Miss. Thank you, Ms. Stein, for that report. That's some exciting news about the technology. I can't wait to hear more about that in the fall. Okay, we're going to move on to our support group update. PTO, I believe we have Michelle on the line.
Yes, hi, everyone. The PTO closed out the year assisting the admin team with the end of the year staff cookout with two days of lunches served on both campuses, on the elementary school campus and at the middle school campus for the middle school and high school staff. And we really, really enjoy being part of this annual tradition and wishing everybody a happy summer. So that was a fun day, Tuesday and Wednesday for us. Our summer bash committee is busy planning for this year's second annual event, which is scheduled for the evening of Thursday, July 20th, at the middle school campus. This is an evening event. You will see an announcement coming out in the next couple of days to a week. And everything will be, you know, posted on School G, so that our our committee has all the details. So that's been fun planning in the works. We're also, we've also reviewed and completed our initial grant approvals for the upcoming year. This information has been shared with campus principals and will be shared with the recipients of the grants by the principals. And we're very excited to fulfill these grants again this year, which include a new Gaga pit at the elementary school and funding for new clubs at the middle school and funding for a college fair at the high school, just to name a few of the grants. And all in all, the grants across all campuses are totaling about 42,000, give or take. Lastly, our buddy family program, which is, you know, for new L N C families, has been initiated. And, you know, this program is such a great program because it connects new families with existing families and just kind of helps with that transition. And let's see, in other news, you know, all of our committees, our lunch committees are busy reviewing vendors and lunch offerings for next year. And our spirit work committee is busy stocking up for our summer bash and early school events in August. And, you know, we have a busy summer ahead of us, but thank you for everybody for all your support. We've had a great year and we have some great energy and lots of new faces in the PTO. So we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Wow, that is so nice of the PTO to fund those projects at each of the schools. So I I can only imagine that, you know, on for the staff, like, thank you. So.
The PTO is awesome. And as she said, so we ended the year with the cookouts. First of all, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Funchess, who is our resident griller. That's how these got started. But we would have just had a lot of meat and nothing else. And the PTO and delicious meat. Let me just say that it was delicious. But but the PTO, I mean, just they they make it so welcoming and so lovely. And that's that's the, it it makes everybody feel feel loved because they they put such effort into making it so beautiful. And it is amazing that they give $42,000 worth of grants because it allows for some pilots and different opportunities that otherwise would not happen. And it gives our staff a chance to have voice in asking, like in stepping out and trying something. So it it is really quite awesome. And I'm very excited to see the new spirit store because they'll be in the the new field house, correct, Ms. Shield?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Yeah, so it's going to be, it's going to be pretty cool. And what a way to kick things off. So thank you so much. And probably the most exciting thing I can say is that Kim and Jamila and Nikki are all coming back as presidents. So that collectively, we are pretty excited because they have done a bang up job. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the athletic boosters. Mr. Schlegel.
Pretend I have more facial hair. Mr. Schlegel is a little bit under the weather. And so I'm reading something that he sent over. It was a great 2022 2023 sports season at L N C. There were a lot of individuals and team accomplishments that continue. To wrap up the spring season, they have, the athletic department held an annual signing day where we recognized six seniors who committed to play at the next level. Hopefully, you guys saw that on social media. It's really cool how they do that, some some neat places that our our student athletes are going to. The nine track and field athletes competed at states, all had great finishes, including Miles Scott, who won the state championship in Discus. And considering we don't actually have field events here, I mean, consider, I mean, think about it. He's he's making, he's making a lot out of that. So that was really cool. And Mr. Schlegel put this last, but he is one of the assistant coaches. Men's lacrosse won its second state championship back to back. And not to jinx them, but he says there's a real shot that number three is around the corner, a three-peat. So yeah, knock on wood. But but it was really cool to see them go back to back, and they worked very hard for that. This summer, the athletic department is in full swing already with L N C sport camps. We have basketball camps that are starting next week and all kinds of other camps that run almost all summer. We will get the new field house up and running and be ready for all fall sports. And fall will start training and workouts this summer to prepare for fall tryouts. So and he says he hopes everyone has a great summer.
Thank you, Ms. Stein, by proxy for Mr. Schlegel. Okay, now we're going to move on to the finance report for our budget. So Ms. Benford and Ms. Wilson, Ms. Benford, do you want to start? Ms. Wilson, you want to start?
Yeah, I'll take it. So the first thing I'm going to ask for approval tonight is the final budget amendment for 2223, which would be budget amendment number three. So Shannon, if you want to take it to the next slide, good luck seeing that. Yeah. So this one, guys, is just pretty much cleanup. A lot of these are offsetting changes that you guys were already made aware of or already approved. We're just adding it officially to the budget so that we can close out. So you'll see that revenue went up about $825,000. A lot of that were state issued bonuses. So teachers that get AP exam scores of three or higher get $50. We get teachers get bonuses for EOG, reading and math. Those are literally, we're a pass-through entity. So we get the revenue, we're told who to give it to, and we push it out. We did see an increase in field trip activity this year when we originally did the budget. We based it on last year, but as you guys know, we geared that back up. So DC happened, Sound to See happened. So we just made those adjustments. Knights Fund came in over budget, but you'll see on the expense side, we trued up the expenses for the field house. Looking here, some COVID grant money adjustments were made, just as again true up. So there's nothing major that you guys weren't aware of, but we just wanted to put all of these in so that we can close this year out. On the expenditure side, we went up by 993,000. Again, a lot of this is offsets. The things I want to call out are extended school year services. We have some EC kids that, due to their I E P, I keep saying I G P, and she reads like, that's not right. Were required to offer extended school year services. So we built that into the budget. We had some capex items, the high school gym repairs. The, obviously, the elementary cooling tower Ms. Stein talked about, we're pulling that from fund balance right now. And then hopefully, we'll we'll be able to pop that back in if we win this lawsuit. And then we had some additional lawn care services that we needed to include in the budget. Two other things I do want to call out, we have to do a capex study this year as part of our bond requirement. So Scott is actually working with a vendor now, and they will present, is it 20-year capex schedules, Scott? And we're going to actually have to fund that. That's one of the bond requirements. So we will have to fund that over 20 years. And then what will happen is when we have something happen that we need to tap into capex, we will draw it down from US Bank. So that's one of the bond requirements. And then we also had to do an arbitrage calculation. We were fine. There was no worries on that, but it costs $5,000. So those expenses are kind of in there, too. So you'll see, when you look at that, we're still operating at a deficit this year of 2.4, primarily due to the purchase of the land for $2 million. So if you look to the right, you'll see a reconciliation. So when you pull out these non-recurring items, we're looking at a surplus of about half a million dollars. Any questions? We just get the regular funding that we get as them being an EC student, correct? They, we do get additional funding for all of our EC students, but we don't get additional funding for students that require extended school year services.
So we need to vote for that, correct?
Move that we accept budget amendment number three. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?
All right. So I cannot believe it's time for the 2324 budget. Seems like the years are going faster. So funding overview. Obviously, I'm probably more aware of this than you guys are. There has not been a budget passed. There has not been a budget passed at the state level yet for the next biennium. Um, the state and House are now working together in conference. The governor presented a proposed budget, the House presented a proposed budget and the Senate presented a proposed budget. Um, the House budget actually was quite surprising. Um, it included an average ten percent increase for salary schedule staff over two years. Seven point five for non-salary scheduled staff. It would reinstate master's pay, late Norman Charter. We honor master's paper. We don't get any additional funding for that. Right? We absorb that cost. So it would actually reinstate that at the state level that would help us out. Um, and then you would see the two biggest payroll expenses outside of the actual payroll are retirement contribution would go to twenty-three point nine four and the healthcare premium would go to seven thousand six fifty-four. So we were really excited when that came out. It wasn't as high as the governor, but it was still pretty decent. Well, then the Senate released their budget and I was really, really disappointed. Um, there's an average four point five increase for salary scheduled staff over the next two years. And they're throwing that number out, guys, but when you look at it, it's heavily weighted towards the beginning of the salary schedule. And our teachers are not predominantly beginning year teachers. So a lot of the experienced teachers are looking at a two hundred dollar raise in the state salary schedule for the year, right? Um, the averaging keys for non-salary scheduled staff over the two years would be five percent. And you will see they went up a little higher on the state employer contribution rate of twen- twenty-four point one two, and then a little less of on the healthcare premium. So, um, we'll see what happens. I don't think this looks good for our teachers. Um, the governor doesn't have veto power anymore. I'm hoping in conference they can come to a better number, but we, we will see. So it's still kind of a waiting game. So based upon this, the state D P I recommends a one to two percent increase in revenue for budgeting because we just don't know. So that's what I used when we created the budget. On the Mecklenburg side, the Mecklenburg County manager fully funded C M S's request, which has not happened in a while. Um, so this indicates pretty good working relationship now between the county and the new superintendent. Um, they will not vote on this as the county commissioners until June sixth. But right now, um, we could see an increase of about six percent in our per pupil revenue from Mecklenburg County. So that's a good sign. All right. So here I just always put in some historical data. So you guys can see where we were. Um, last year we went up about five percent at the state and for almost five percent of the local too. So, um, I don't think we're going to see that increase at the state this year, but, but we'll see. So when creating the budget, I use the following assumptions, two percent state local funding, four percent for C M S and one percent for all other E L A, L E As. Um, we did increase after school tuition for the first time since the program's inception. We're still very market competitive with the other programs that are out there, um, but we wanted to increase the pay for that staff too. So we needed to bring in additional revenue. And, um, we did not include any of the COVID relief revenues or expenditures because that will just be a rollover and I don't know what that number is yet. So we'll just add it as a budget amendment in the fall. On the expenditure side, we did step increases for salary scheduled staff and a one point five increase for non-salary scheduled staff, which would take effect December first. We added a new E C position at the elementary school based upon need. A three point five percent increase in state healthcare premiums. I did not increase the retirement rate actually because both proposals, it's going to actually go down. So I held it flat. Um, we increased the property insurance, building class replacements have gone up, so we needed to factor that in. Um, you will also see the civil engineer and architect work for the new elementary school built into the budget. It will be a fund balance contribution, but we have the intention of doing a reimbursement resolution so that we can fund the school back once we do the financing. Um, bus replacement, um, increase in facility contracted services. And then capex based upon this capex study that we're doing. So here it is, we're looking at about twenty-three million in revenue. You guys can see the breakdown. I'm not going to go through each line. Um, and then twenty-three, nine in expenditures, so leaving a deficit of about seven hundred thousand. But again, if you go to the right and look at the reconciliation, if you pull out that elementary preliminary work, we're looking at about three hundred thousand surplus for the year, which would bring our end in fund balance to about eight point five million.
Is there a minimum requirement for the fund balance?
There's not a minimum requirement. We have to have forty-five days cash on hand. Um, and we far exceed that, that you'll see on the next, on a couple of slides.
Sorry. And the, and the capex study is the goal to figure out what our capex needs are for the next twenty years and then allocate that over the same time period.
Correct. Um, and we're, we're we kind of have some say in what that looks like too. So Scott is working very closely. We're not, we're not throwing things that are operating in there. Like we're trying to keep it the kind of the big items. So, yeah. All right. So just a little analysis of, um, kind of where we're ending last year budget to the proposed additional state revenue expect, expected for state bonuses, like more revenue will come in on the state side. I just don't add it until I actually know what that is. And a lot of that is an offset. Um, I do feel like the C M S per pupil is going to increase. Um, we had a lot of grants this year that we won't have next year. Um, the big one was the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services that actually paid for nursing for the past two years. And also, um, we got sixty thousand dollars to do improvements to the elementary school playground and the high school counseling suite. Um, so those were all one-time things that are not in next year's budget. Interest revenue I've not included yet because I don't know what that's going to kind of look like, but I feel like we will have some there that will help. Um, and then, uh, we won't do anything in regards to the capital campaign contributions until budget amendment one, since we know what, when we know what that's going to look like. On the expense side, you'll see there's an increase. A lot of that's due to the salary increases and the new E C position. Um, and then again, a lot of grants ended, which is why some of these expenditures are going down. And then we will hopefully finally complete the Elevate project, and that's why our capex is going down quite considerably. So Greg, this is going to help you. So as I stated before, we have to maintain at least forty-five days cash on hand. You will see based on this budget, we're going to have a hundred and sixty-three days. So we're well in the clear of that. And then the second ratio we have to be is the debt coverage ratio. Shannon, if you want to go to the next slide. And we have to have, um, one point two. But if we maintain seventy-five days cash on hand, we can do one point one and we're going to be at one point three projected. So we're going to meet that ratio too. So that's all I have. Um, any questions?
And just to put a little color on that, we've been starting to talk to, um, different folks as far as who might be our lending partner moving into the new elementary project and, um, they're even with the debt that we already have, they've seen the cash on hand and our, our debt coverage ratio and feel very, very good about what our position will be going into the market and, and being able to move forward with that project.
And I just had a question about the per pupil funding, how that works. If we've got a student that's in the Charlotte Mecklenburg area, do we get both the state funding amount and the C M S funding amount?
Yeah. So we get two sources of funding for each student, the state we get for every student, which is based upon the first twenty day headcount, which is why you guys implemented the new rule last year. And then we bill, um, every P M R. So it's not monthly, it's over a nine periods, um, for the counties, for the actual students in the C at the end of the P M R. So we invoice right now about seven counties and it's the county that the student resides in.
Okay, um, if there are no more questions for, um, Haley or Ms. Benford, um, I'll entertain a motion to um, approve the F Y twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
This is Elizabeth. I'll need to approve the budget. This is my floor, I moved to second. Or second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
I'd just like to say a big thank you to Nicole and to Haley. It is, it is a big job to put this together. As you can see all the detail on that and she does a fantastic job. So thank you for that, Haley. Okay.
All right, um. Let's see, now we are going to get an update from the Knights Fund. So, um, I'm assuming that's Ms. Lee?
Okay, good evening, everybody. So this is my slide. This is what you get from the marketing person. This is it.
It's very pretty. That's what you get from marketing. Very pretty.
You don't even need your paper. You can all read it. All right. So very basic, very straightforward. Our total expenditures, and if you have questions about this, I'm going to let you ask, um, the experts in the room, who wouldn't be me, but our total expenditures for our Elevate projects, remember that was the safety upgrades to the middle school and improving our middle school and event parking lot, our campus, uh, drive approach, and then our track, field, press box and Knights Fieldhouse. Total expenditures that we have paid or will pay are, um, three million, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and four hundred ninety-one cents, eighty-one cents? Oh, yeah, yeah, not cents. Thank you. That's why I sat next to Haley so she can correct all of my, um, all of my verbal errors. Uh, total cash in hand. I'm so happy to tell you that we have clipped the two million point that happened in about mid-April. So my partner, Michelle, and I went out and celebrated that. Um, so super excited about that. That is our cash in hand. So that is from July of twenty nineteen and forward. And these numbers that I'm sharing with you tonight were just, um, brought together in the last two days. So they are very current. Um, from L N C, many of you will remember the school generously voted to contribute a million dollars in like a matching type format. And so together that is our big, uh, figure of, uh, three million dollars and, and some change. Um, the pledge balance. So now we have to look at not just what we have in hand, but what we can expect to have, right? That's what you guys want to know about because you can see at this point that we're, we've got a little bit of a gap between what we have in hand and what we have paid and will pay. So our pledge balance consists of about a hundred and seventy donors. Um, they will complete their pledges no later than twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. I have something to say about that in a second, but that sum total is three hundred and two thousand and a little bit more. So that gets us, um, to our three point three seven five number that you see in big, um, green print. And, um, that's where we stand now, but I want to back up to the pledge balance really quick and let you guys know that the distribution of those, um, pledges that are continuing is not even. And by that I mean that it is more front loaded. Many of those pledges were established, not just yesterday or last week, but going back to twenty twenty-one. And these are people who either weren't here or for some reason didn't get on board when we launched Elevate in the fall of twenty nineteen, or they are our super, super parents who, um, heard my message back in November of twenty-one when we said, hey, we're going to launch Elevate two point oh because COVID happened. And even though you did what we asked, we kind of want you to re-up again. And many of them did that. And so those are those folks. And so I have some, um, some that have come on still in twenty twenty-three and some of them have come on at very generous levels. Um, and with that are some nice incentives that they will gain from that. But because of those levels, we needed to offer them a little bit more time. And so I don't want anyone here to think that this is evenly spaced out every month. We, you know, the eighteen months between now and December of twenty twenty-four. People are rolling off their pledges every single day and week because many of them have been at it for twenty-four months or what have you, or close to it. Um, so then the balance that we have left, um, as our shortfall, as it stands right now today, and if those folks continue to pay off their three hundred and two, um, thousand pledges, we're at four hundred and ten and a little bit more. So that's what we're looking at. Um, and you know, we're going to have conversation about, you know, what to do about that, right? Because there's some pros of continuing on with that um, on the schedule and sticking with this. And then there's also some, if you look over kind of longer term, the inspiration of giving new folks on board to give often doesn't come with paying something back that is already erected and in use, which I'm referring to all of our Elevate upgrades. So thanks to COVID, um, as y'all remember, who were here anyway, in April of twenty twenty, we made the tough decision to move forward for a number of reasons. And I think in hindsight, that was a very good decision, but at the same time, um, we were left without being able to ask families for over eighteen months. And that definitely has obviously extended the campaign and, um, hurt us in some ways. And then the last figure that I just want to speak to for a second is our annualized recurring donations, um, almost two hundred people. And I annualize that number to get to about a hundred and fifty K so that you guys understand this group of people have come on most recently since we've launched our twenty-five, um, twenty-five, uh, twenty-five years, twenty-five dollars, twenty-five reasons campaign. And they are recurringly giving mostly monthly. Um, and so everything that they have given thus far is included in that cash in hand, but I have no pledge for them, which is a good thing because pledges have some drawbacks. Um, but I have no pledges with them. So I can't tell you or I can't include that in my pledge balance because there's not a pledge balance. They're simply saying, yeah, we're going to continue to support our student or students while they are here with our recurring gift. So if we annualize those a hundred and ninety-two donors, what most of them are giving once a month, um, we get to a hundred and fifty K. So if you're thinking, well, how long do we want to keep going with Elevate and how close will we be to paying back the school? What would that schedule look like? That's why I included that number. And of course, one last thing, this holds everything exactly as it is, meaning that we don't gain one more new donor moving forward, right? Which obviously is not going to happen. Questions?
Not a question, but maybe just something to add to the board. So this suggests we're going to, you know, come in a little bit short. Cover the full cost of those expenditures. So, uh, you know, as we kind of monitor things over the next couple of months, I think, uh, Sarah and I are going to kind of work on coming back to the board with recommendations on how we close that gap, whatever it is, whether, you know, four hundred thousand or something slightly different. Um, so we'll need to talk through that, bring some recommendations and then we'll need to vote on which, uh, direction we go. And we'll, we'll, we'll definitely put together some, some recommendations for this group.
Any questions? Okay.
So if you're not in that a hundred ninety-two group, but maybe you were giving recurringly under a pledge, like has its drawbacks, like you said. Is, uh, like, is there an opportunity to ask them to extend or?
Yes, definitely. And that's the drawback really of a pledge is that a lot of people, and why I feel like, and as Jared said, we'll speak to this a little bit more later, but I think a lot of people here elevate and they're like, great, we got the project. It was successful. So they, the three things come to mind. Great. We did it. And, um, love the new stuff and I did it. I checked that box, but you checked that box back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And when I came back, some folks re-upped, but many didn't because in their mind, I've done Elevate. I did what the school wanted. And so that's really the drawback of pledges, Jen, is that it creates a lot of work for my group to be going out to all of those people and trying to make the case over again for something that had a finite ending because it was a multi-year capital campaign. And now we've achieved all of those six upgrades.
Just, I mean, there's probably some people who also look at it like an, uh, monthly gift that they will keep giving, right? So how do we? How do we find them?
And many of them do.
Yeah.
And many of them do, but, but not all.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of times it's not that they tell us no, or they tell us yes, it's just really hard to penetrate people's informational walls.
And Sarah, I think one of the things, and I think that's one of the strategies that Sarah and Jared are talking about is without having any other new carrot. So maybe I'm a good giver, but I feel like Elevate, in their mind, they actually think Elevate's paid for. I paid my pledge. I've done my portion. So it's almost like we need to get back into an annual campaign. And then whatever the strategy is to whether there's still some payback for elevator or whether that's kind of waived and we start doing some new things, there's got to be some excitement. Plus we keep bringing in new families. So like you said, nobody, like if I go, just think about, say, giving money to your church, you're like, hey, we'd really like you to pay down our, our mortgage debt. Like, that's not very, very sexy. But if you talk about adding on or doing something new, and I think there's some opportunities to, to add a carrot there. And that's, that's the strategy.
Yes. And that's why we went to the twenty-five year, twenty-five dollars, twenty-five reason, because we knew we needed to get away from this pledge. We saw the writing on the wall with this as the projects were coming to a close. And we really wanted to start, we made the, um, intentional decision that we were going to start talking kind of more like an annual fund.
How much of the three point seven is still yet to be paid? And is that delta included in the budget we just approved?
It's included in the budget and, um, it should actually all be paid out. I think Scott's got two pay-ups right now and we may have just a little bit of, um, retainage on there. So yeah, we may have some that has to roll into, to next year's budget, but if the work's completed, we'll probably accrue it back to this year anyway.
Were there any significant overages in terms of like specifically for the field house or is everything coming in relatively close to the budget?
I mean, we built in contingency and we tapped into all of it, but yeah.
Okay.
Me too.
And, and also when we dreamed this whole thing up back in twenty eighteen and, you know, we remember conversations between Shannon And, and also when we dreamed this whole thing up back in twenty-eighteen, and you know, we remember conversations between Shannon, me, Scott, and Haley, the, the price of the green, you know, our internal name for it before we named it Elevate, was incredibly less than what it actually is. And part of that is thanks to COVID again, is, you know, stuff costs more and stuff dragged out.
So if we don't come up with a solution for the four hundred, um, and we only have about a hundred and fifty, is that going to hinder other projects that we may need to have been using those recurring donations? Because there's always stuff that happens, the parking lot or carpool, whatever. Is it going to hinder anything?
Well, I mean, it would look like where we wouldn't have those new shiny carrots, right? And so, you know, we, we wouldn't be able as the Knights Fund to come in and say, hey, Media Center at the middle school, we're going to build you a new production studio in a new um ditched classroom. Um, so it's not so much that, it's, it's not that there's a, there's a whole list of things that are needs, I mean.
But there are definitely some things, I mean, if you looked at the list of the twenty-five that Sarah put together, and, and that might be something for us to bring back when you guys are planning the plan, just to remind folks, they're, they're, they're not things that we can't do without, but they're things that have made huge impacts. And I think one of the things that we're really struggling with is when we bring in a new kindergarten class, that's when they're excited and they want to hop on. But it's really hard, one, you're paying back old debt, and you're paying back old debt at the middle school, right? So it's years and years away for them to, to think about that. So for us to be able to think about, when we, we've done annual campaigns before, we've always had some type of incentive at each campus. So that as a parent, if I'm giving faithfully, I can say, look, I've contributed to something that has enhanced my child's program, not something that will actually be worn down by the time my child gets to it. So I think that's where that, that plan that Jared and Sarah are talking about. And then if we don't grab those kindergarten folks, because there is nothing for them, then once they're in a couple of years, it's, you don't have that, that same opportunity to get them on as recurring givers. So every year we wait, we're kind of losing that pot or opportunity.
Yeah, I think it needs to be a part of our culture.
Yeah.
And you've got to start the culture when they come in through the door.
And again, that's where COVID really hurt us, because there was at least two, kind of three arguably grade levels, because even the fifth graders that started into the fall of twenty-nineteen never got their full year. They never got their overnight field trip, which so much bonding happens on these overnight field trips. So it was, it was, it was hard. There was about three grade levels there that did not have the normal experience, or they were going into seventh grade, but really hadn't had regular fifth and sixth grade, so they were almost new.
Okay, are there any other questions or? All right, um, well, that brings us to our new business. So tonight, um, the board needs to nominate and vote on um new officer positions for the upcoming year. Should I say the names and then someone motion or someone?
I think, yeah, so I think whoever's doing the motion can do the selected slate of what that is.
One at a time. I can do the slate, okay. Um, sure, well, I am uh, uh, on my way out. I asked for the privilege to, to nominate the next slate of leadership. And I will just say, I'm, I'm sad to be leaving and sad not to be part of this chapter, because I think it's going to be a really great chapter. Amy is a gifted communicator and a bridge builder. It just comes so naturally to her. Greg is one of the most rational, smart, reasonable leaders that I know. You're in great hands, and I just know they're going to do great things. And so it is my pleasure, that was my question, um, to nominate for our new board chair, Amy Carr, um, our new vice chair, Greg Kilpatrick, our next secretary, Elizabeth Timkovich, and then our new treasurer will be our new board member, Gray Morris. And so I motion that we approve those board positions.
I second that slate of officers.
Okay, um, any discussion? I didn't even ask that before the last um votes, but I think I'm supposed to. So all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty, so I move, or I declare, I don't know, um, the, the meeting is over, seven-fifty-six.